What I want to show you is on the old remains and we talked about for a few years. We're in better time, we're getting out. Well, what ended up is that one section rusted off and fell off. Dennis Burn said it would go up in the middle. But I wanted to kind of show you what that looks like. The millings on the parking lot, it's been a year since we put the millings in. And I will tell you, I never quite understood how well this stuff is working. But boy, it is good.
It looks like it's really good.
It's holding up real well. In some spots where there's a lot of high traffic, it's pounded down to where it really looks like aim. Where the septic system is right there from about three, they're going to come up and then the branch up to right in front of this tree over here. And then they're going to bore underneath. They're going to try to leave the parking lot alone. They will be going through the middle of this part. And I'll kind of show you where the... If you look back, you can kind of see where the drain gutter fell off the roof. It just rusted away is what it did. And that whole rain gutter up there is all pitted out and rusted so... One of the things that we added on to the big specs of the roof was having all that one and two, the septic contract that we were doing. When we think of what that's like, we're caught with the reason that we're in the event. Otherwise, the rest of the wall around on another roof, that's why. That was one of the issues we're getting into here. Otherwise, the outside of the building looks pretty good until we get out onto the playground. And then you're going to see a few issues out there that we're getting into. We do have the sidewalk frost heaved over the winter. The frost heat created tripping hazard. We had a couple of kids that had fallen down and we had a parent who said, "You know, if my kid breaks his arm, I'm suing you." And then you take a look at the sidewalk and grinding it down by acorn versus replacement, we're replacing the sidewalk because of the issue. On the new septic drain field, one of the requirements that I asked on them was to not dig trenches in the middle of our parking lots if at all possible where cars travel. Because it'll create potholes in the future. We're going to try to keep the trenching right in line with the sidewalk here, about three to five feet off. And trench right through here. That way, we don't have any trenching going on in the middle of the driveway or park of the facility. And then what they plan on doing is like mixing concrete holes in the parking lot about three to five feet off. They're going to trench up through the middle, come up to here, straight down here, bore underneath, and then go up to the west. And that's their plan. I know on one of the original designs, you saw it on the other side of the highway. But they were looking off the green earth with their map and it didn't have that trail in there yet. And so they said, "Well, we really don't want to be tearing up all that new trail that's been put in there." So they readjusted their design a little bit and they're going to do it here.
It'd be better to have it on a proper angle.
Absolutely. So we can go in and take a look in the school. Ever since I've been here, we've been taking desks and chairs each year. And about sixty to eighty chairs and desks, we identify. It's been averaging about that where we've been welding them, fixing them, and refixing them. And we really haven't been buying any furniture. And you're going to see some chairs and desks that are just at a point of... We had a garage full of old desks. We now have very, very few. Because when the equipment finally totally wears out, you get rid of it. You dispose of it because it's totally worn out. And we'll show you some of the furniture we're using currently and why we're going to start replacing this equipment. Because we just, there's only so many times you can weld this stuff and fix stuff. And so I'll show you a couple of options where we've been doing it. When you get into like a situation like this on a desk, one of the things that you're faced with is, number one, this chair here was built... This desk here was built in the seventies. So we're talking something that's about forty years old. After a number of years, they're going to wear out. Here you have the cracked back. We call this a pincher. Somebody sits down in it, leans back, pinches themselves. You're going to find that some of the seats on them become pinchers. When that happens, it's worn out. It's time, it's served its life. Another really important thing is like the surface itself. You know, when you get these grooves and digs in them, it makes it harder when another kid comes in and they're writing along in there. Not on a smooth surface, right? And then you'll see things like here where you can see we've done work. It used to be riveted here. We redesigned it a little bit. But you can see this chair is sloping at a wrong angle. And they're just, we have equipment like this that is worn out. It's just, it's served its life and it's time for it to, you know, go its way. And so we do have some of that need. But this type of need is pretty extensive. And so we're going to be taking a look at trying to replace quite a few desks this year if we possibly can. And that is one of the things we're taking a serious look at. We can move along and I can show you a better example of welding and things that we have done in the last class on the desks.
Does that last for forty years? You better buy it from the same company.
Good point, Mel.
Or whatever company that was.
They're probably not in business.
Oh, especially in the school. Really takes a beat there.
So like we say with, like these lockers here, if you take a look at them, as good as they get, they just got a new paint job last week. We keep trying to manage and work through and take care of things, but you'll see that, you know, a lot of these things get loose. And when they do, you know, Dennis does a great job. He spends quite a bit of time maintaining lockers. He'll get them where they come in and fix the latch mechanism and reorder parts. Dennis does a really good job of trying to maintain them. But they eventually wear out. Remember when we replaced the lockers downstairs? And they pulled those lockers away from the wall. They had the worst smell in the world. And then when they actually got them outside, I was surprised with how broken down the structures were actually on. But you couldn't tell because they're up against the wall and stuff. And so, you know, things like this eventually do wear out as carpeting turns out and there's other things in a building. Maintenance is a huge issue. And it's something that I am very proud to say, we have done a very nice job. And I want to thank you as trustees for the support that you lent in us taking care of the facility. Because we've been taking care of some massive issues over the time. And I feel we're only now starting to see the daylight of the tunnel. And some of the big projects we have taken on and some of the improvements we've made. But I always tell people, you know, we're building the school from inside out. We put in a new fire alarm system. If you recall, remember when the fire alarms used to go off? There are classes that would sit there and they didn't even know a fire alarm was going off. And then the day we did have, the dust bunnies up the heat ventilator set on fire and the fire department came in and there was smoke in the building. Only had a classroom that was still in the building because they couldn't hear the fire alarm system. And we couldn't track down the problems and issues because it was just time to get a new one. So we invested in a new system. So we've done a lot in really upgrading the facility to take care of it. And we'll eventually probably need to take care of these, but not this year. We've got other things that come along. Then this desk here, and this desk here are two prime examples that show you what we're trying to do. And then you could probably take a new one here. So here are three examples of a desk that is in relatively good shape. We haven't had to do a lot of work. You can see we've done a little bit of spot welding on to keep it fixed. But its integrity is pretty solid. Then you see this desk where, you know, these kids are hard on it. You get a heavy kid sitting in there and he's tired and leaning back. I'll tell you, they put a lot of torque on the furniture. Here, the bar snapped, so we came in and we put some flat iron in here. We welded it up. And you can see that it's in pretty good shape. Well, then this one here, this year, the bar completely snapped off and it's in need of repair. Now, will we get rid of this desk? No. Will we get rid of this desk? No. These are actually, well, actually this desk is off because it's got butt pinchers here, you know, the cracks. Anytime you see that, those are hazards where we need to get rid of the equipment. And the problem with it is, this desk here will sell for about eighty to ninety dollars. This seat alone will sell, just the plastic shell will be sixty bucks. So then you're into, do you take something you've been welding on and put a sixty dollar shell on there or you get an entirely new one? Then you got to make the choice. Here, we've got this desk, fairly good shape. We'll fix this one. But in some instances like that, we need to get rid of it. We just need to replace and swap it out. So I just wanted you to see that we're really taking a serious look at our equipment this year. Because Dennis Burn says, "Uncle, I have nothing else in storage for us to really rely on." And we're at a loss for replacement equipment. So, you know, that's where we're at. Otherwise, things are coming along good. So do you administrators have anything you want to add to this point of your building?
Just that things are starting to look a lot better. I think the carpets have helped out. Getting new desks would make a huge difference. Our custodial crew has done a really nice job of trying to keep things up. We had one of them going around painting the lockers today to make them look nice and new, or last week to make them nice and new again and everything. So we're starting to get, so that it's kind of a nice, safe, good environment, positive environment, that way, physical environment for the kids.
And one of the big things, that storage unit we did last year took a lot of stuff out of the hallways. And remember how we had all the folding chairs in the hallway going down here? They got that stuff out of the hallway, you know, which is really nice. Because then you get more of a welcoming, inviting school feel instead of like you're in a storage unit, you know, like you're in a closet or something. So, you know, some of those things have been really nice additions. And then like the benches in the shop built these a couple of years ago and they're holding up well. And I'm going to take you around the locker room and show you any issue that we're doing. Now, a couple of years back, we used to paint this floor every year. We'd get a couple of gallons of paint at thirty, forty bucks a gallon. But every year, we'd scratch down some cement. So then one year, I saw this epoxy garage floor coating and we put it on. It's been four years. So, you know, we learned that kind of product serves us very well. So we're looking at, now it's starting to wear down. You can see the spots. So it's in need now to be upgraded this summer. So we're going to clean it up in the summer to paint these floors in here, get that repaired. And I want to take you to the locker room steps because we talked about that being an issue. So as you can see with the steps in the Miami, we've talked about the last couple of years of wanting to get to a point of fixing it. I do have a bidding from Mike Hudson, builder of BAM Construction. He's put a bid in to go ahead and take care of these steps on this side and on the other side. And then he'll put new wood in there, reinforce it up, make it nice and square. And then we'll be responsible for painting and taking care of it. I got Dennis Burns, who, you know, is our maintenance supervisor, who's done stair tread for the district. I went ahead and had him, you know, price it out as to what the stair tread would be to put nice stair treads on there that aren't slick and people won't slip and fall down. So that's one of the things that we also do. Then you'll remember this floor was one of the best investments we've ever done. We put in this nice floor and the texture on it is kind of really, you know, non-slip. And it, you know, it hasn't been cleaned, so don't grade it on its cleanliness. But, you know, these lockers were heated brown, we have them digged and they've issued and really painted the walls. It is a huge, huge improvement over what it was five years ago. I mean, you know, the kids aren't so much embarrassed in this place anymore. You know, they look at it. Remember we did the new shower stalls in here and took care of those a couple of years back. And so things down here work pretty well. The only thing that I can see is maybe an upgrade of the lockers. You know, we do have double month of lockers in middle schools in here, high schools in here. And there might be the need in the future to put a bank of lockers there, a bank of lockers over there. Maybe redesign this a little bit and put some lockers in here. It's something we may want to think about for the future. Also, one of the things that we discovered, remember we have hot water and toilets? And we're trying to figure that whole issue. And finally ended up resolving that problem with the new water system that we put in up above. But we then found that the heater, the vent for the dryer was blowing directly into the shower unit. We're able to get that taken care of too. So we've done some thins where we've tackled some problems and been ongoing for years and years. And I'm going to put it out this way. A lot of it, you have to credit Dennis Burns. He takes a lot of pride in his school. But the thing about him, he's a gentleman. He really knows his stuff. When he gets put to an issue, he investigates and works on it, works on it until he finds a solution. And Dennis does nice stuff.
Only took us four years and did a good maintenance man.
He is good. He's thorough, very thorough. Goes through and makes sure it's done right. So take you around here and go out to the corner. Locker rooms, these boys. Remember the old ones were a little problematic and are getting better. Now what they're doing right now is they put in a new gas line. And what we found is this gas line, it was, it had different faults in three or four different spots. And it ended up being just the easiest thing was to replace the entire gas line. So it's currently in the process of being fixed. But you recall, you know, we had Northwest Energy in here. You know, we had a faint smell of natural gas. We found that there was a break here, a break right about here, and then back up the line. We couldn't tell where the third one was. But every time we charged the line and did a pressure test, it didn't lose pressure. So now we just put a new line into our meter up there. Some people said, "Well, isn't that Northwest Energy's issue?" It's not. It's because Northwest Energy comes straight to the main leader up here. Anything beyond that for the building is our responsibility. So we're working on that. But it's, you know, coming along well. We'll get that taken care of. You'll see over here at the sump, if I can do well. If you recall, it saved us to school grant, I mean, Quick Start Grant, tried to get grant money to take care of this. I had BAM Construction and Dale Brown come in and bid this sump area. And you know, as you recall, the sump is too close to the well. You know, that is one of the things that they're really concerned with is if we start getting bad water tests at all, they're going to make us move that well. But if we can mitigate it by controlling our surface water runoff and our roof drain runoff that all come into that sump there, then they're going to be much more lenient with us in terms of how they will address the contamination treatment system. What we're planning to do is to change that sump out to a thousand gallon holding tank. So all the roof drains that come down here and all the surface water that goes in, they'll go into a thousand gallon tank. And then that tank is going to have an eight inch pipe come out to a sump that we'll put over here that is over a hundred feet away from the well. Now, we've been told that if you get out about a hundred feet away from your well, you're outside of that mixing zone, which they really don't want you putting anything inside the mixing zone because it could contaminate the aquifer, to your water supply. And this is our main drinking water well. So we put a sump over here, drain all the water over to that, get it off. And that way, we no longer have that source of contamination that can be occurring right here to our drinking water system. And so that is something where we ended up with a couple of bids on it. One was fifteen, the other one was fourteen-five. So Dale Brown was fourteen-five and Mike Hudson was fifteen-four.
Would you just run that right in the old sewer?
The old drain field?
What is a sump consistent here?
All it is is a tank. All it is is a bunch of rock down in there right now. So it's a French drain. Get it away so it's not, so the hydraulic pressure isn't pushing right down to the aquifer on top of your well. I don't know if they'd allow that. But it's already been handled. Ah, not on this one. But we're ready to run now.
Oh, I don't know. It's, you got an old drain field over there that's default.
You know, I'll make a call tomorrow. I'll call the... Trying to think if it's the county sanitary or environmental health of Valley County and ask that question. That's a good question. I never even thought about it that way. Because now, if we could somehow do that, then we might be able to utilize that structure under the playground without worries about, you know, digging another sump out. The only thing that we have to do is get it all to a tie-off spot. You know, make sure gravity feeds right to it. And then as soon as everything switches over, have them come in and switch it at the same time. So I'll talk with the county to see if there's any regs on that and see what the cost difference would be. Okay? And then over here is the sidewalk. Right here, we have a real serious puddling issue. Look at all these ankle bustlers. We've got a hole in the sidewalk here, crack. Go over here, the frost heat carried all the way down here. Serious frost heat. So we have Chapman Concrete working on this currently to do this. Now, some people have said, "Now, you're going to do all this and leave that." That concrete really, you know, it's rough, but it's not in the worst of shape. There's other cracked concrete out here that I think, you know, probably has bigger needs than that right there. So, you know, this is what we're looking at, we're working on right now. Them bidding on the roof, we did put it out for bid. We let it out. We do have the bid. They bid in. We only have one bid on the roof. So Metal Works in Montana does have a bid. After we eat, I will go and bring it over and there will be an official bid opening on that to see what their pricing is. And they're talking about doing the overlay on that roof.
There's a lot of this. You're going to dig a hole from here to there to do this. Perhaps the asphalt over there, maybe it's bobs or a pergono there. Just get some asphalt over there to do this. But I don't know, maybe square footers. I don't know how to prepare for some of that.
I have no idea of preparing some asphalt and concrete. I do know that they're going to cut for wherever they trench. You know, they're coming in to do a saw cut to do that. I don't know who Dale would use to do his cutting. Dale's bid is cheaper than Mike's. And, you know, they both were proposing to pretty much do the same thing. The big difference between their two bids was one is going to do a five hundred gallon holding tank and the other is going to do a thousand. You know, very comparable bids.
Yeah, I don't know. Personally, I'd check into that and see if they'll take off from here. Repair this with asphalt.
How do the other?
Whether it holds up, I suppose.
How are the other trustees feel about that?
Well, say it again now so that we all hear. Because I only heard part of what you said.
Well, I'm just wondering if they're going to be more, if they'd like to use asphalt versus cement. Because we're going to have to do a lot of patching. If they're going to cut a line to drain that sump, you're going to patch that or you do this at the same time and hodge a pergono up there in that high school.
Can they get right up next to the building without damaging it with the asphalt stuff?
Yeah, they can.
They can? Yeah, some are a few.
That would avoid the salt problem too if you sideline versus asphalt, you can't put salt.
Yeah, we wouldn't be putting salt on. Yeah, we wouldn't be putting salt on the new concrete, we don't need that.
The asphalt has more guilt, right? Than the cement does, or is there any difference?
Yeah, those are a little more.
Yeah.
You know, and yet you say that, I mean, look at all that concrete we put out here as a walkway, probably just, I mean, hitting asphalt with all the back of the widdy that's doing that handicap round, you know? For aesthetics, if you're just worried about aesthetics, you know, concrete would match up with what you currently have here. But for functionality, I don't think there's much different functionality.
But you got asphalt here, so it's gonna be bad over there.
Yeah. And then moving inside this building, we'll take a look at it. And then this is one of the rooms where we put a bucket over here and it drips whenever there's rain or there's snow up there. This is one of the rooms that, you know, we have some pitting on this section, you can see the marks where it's coming through. Dennis has some buckets, uh, strung up in the ceiling that he keeps managed and go up every so often and empty them out and, you know, try to keep the water from coming down in here. So... And then we get into here, I don't smell the turpentine, but one of the things that you face, like this chair here, you know, you get into these chairs here. You know, they're starting to rock, they've been used. This is about a forty-year-old chair right here. One of the things that becomes very difficult is cleaning them, you know? They've scrubbed them and done as much as they could to it, but some of that grind just gets worked in there so hard that now he's reverting to using some turpentine and paint remover and stuff, very caustic stuff to try to scrub through it. Um, we try to get the best cleaning stuff we can, the best scrub pads we can, and, you know, we resort to, I guess, you know, turpentine's a great cleaner and so is bleach.
Get some high-pressure washers like the wash trucks and stuff like that. Chair would probably fall apart, but it'd be clean.
Yeah, I was gonna say the chairs were a whole lot better.
And you can see these tables, like, you know, you get into some of these tables, they're wearing thin. You can see where the linoleum ornament's beginning to wear thin. And the parents, you know, just kinda wanna know, why are we letting it get to that point? Well, our cleaners are scrubbing and these tables and stuff is scrubbed every night. Wherever the kids put their hands, we make sure wipe down and clean and disinfect it every night. So, just our issues that we have with the building. Again, that's, that's an investment of something where I think when you got falling down rain gutters and you got, you know, frost heat sidewalks and you got, uh, sump with issues, there's all kinds of things that just creep up that you need to just prioritize and take care of. We'll get that. And I believe we're gonna, we have come a long way. Miss Holla, what do you think?
Maybe if the shop kids do a job on the shed.
Yeah, you know how we put that concrete down there for a shed? Well, next fall, they're gonna start building the shed. I know it's a year later than we wanted, but we have the supplies, you know, they're delivered. Um, the trustees will be delivered when they get ready to work. But, uh, we're gonna have a contractor come in and kind of work with the shop teacher when they start erecting that shed and, you know, let the students learn from that experience. You know, 'cause we have a contractor that will come down and oversee it just to make sure that it's getting done correctly. And our shop teacher will be working with, and we have the saws and, and tools that will go down and see him making. So, is that, is that that little computer thing that we...
The little computer thing? But it's pretty indestructible, right?
I hope so.
That's the thing from Greater Valley Company? That's a hundred thousand dollars?
No, it's ninety-nine. I think for all of the ones that they put in the school.
But it's, it's inexpensive.
Probably several thousand dollars, yeah. This little type probably made those, you know...
You get a whole bunch of other ones for that price.
But it's colorful and the kids, the kids do like it.
The kids do like it and it's pretty kid-proof.
I guess it's a use of it.
It's incentive for them, things by Title I future, you know, when they get through with what they're supposed to be when they have Title I. Yes, it is perfect for kindergarten first and second grade.
Hey, is there anything on the other side that we wanna go see? So we'll go up towards the third grade hall.
'Cause I talk so much about MBI and... So anyway, when I talked about MBI and our SARA award, um, we did this wall and then we also have the bulletin board that we do and so every month, the kids get their picture taken and then we have, when I tell you about the assemblies and everything, that's kind of what it, what it's all about, so.
And I like to, Mrs. Holla, say the kids transfer from Victor, they really feel like a fair parent.
These are the colors of Jody's office. When we redid the foyer, we, Jody wanted to match her office and I didn't know what these were Victor colors.
This area's been yellow for years.
But it is, it's very attractive, it's very inviting. This is grade school and this is what you want when it comes in.
Yeah, you have to remember that when they come in, what they...
We're putting some red and green, you got every color, so.
Yeah, we do.
You'll recall, you know, this just used to be dirt.
Yeah.
You know, you just see kids throwing dirt and rocks at each other after school out here. And this is, you know, a lot better. I mean, it's, it's nice to see because it shows that you're taking pride in yourself and in your school. And the parents feel a lot better about it, you know, having this done. So, these were improvements we made several years back. We need to get in and do some weeding, but holding up pretty good. So here's your third grade classrooms. Um, and just so you, you know, to make you aware, the Promethean boards are a huge benefit to this school. You know, we have these in every classroom now and they're a tremendous asset. If you were to try to take these away from the teachers right now, there'd be a rebellion. It makes a huge difference on instructional delivery and how teachers are presenting information to students and learning is occurring. And one of the things that we're now moving towards is iPads in education, getting iPads into the school also. So, we have a big investment, you know, on cycle this year, we had our communication arts for update, you know, every six years we update our curriculum. And so, you know, we went through and we made sure that we're in common core aligned and that we're doing the things that we need to. So this new textbook cycle, um, at the high school level in the English department, they're gonna be using a lot of iPads to have electronic books in the room for the kids. And then it's gonna integrate right with the Promethean board. So, you know, this is stuff that we are able to do and we're giving our kids a leg up. I mean, when they go off to college, our kids will have really good experiences with technology that not every student at Hellgate sent on Big Sag it. And I, and I wanna really thank the trustees for allowing the tech committee to move forward studies. And so, we've got a really good, solid computer network in this school and I'm very proud of it. And we have some really good things that are going on as we evolve.
Have you ever seen the skylights in here?
Yeah, they were built and put in here.
Oh, that's great.
They, they bring a lot of natural lighting.
Oh, yeah.
And as you can see, she has a little rock, she can just turn it and open it up for a lot of daylight in here.
No, we replaced the carpet was a couple of years ago.
I wish, when we got this, I wish we could put this in every room. This carpet is durable, it's good-looking.
Yeah, doesn't show the wear like the solder color does, yeah.
This was, and this was one of those, you know, truckload sales where, you know, Western Florence says, I got this stuff, it's great. And Zola's putting it in some of their classrooms and we ended up getting it and it was, you know, quite a bit cheaper per square foot.
How long ago was that?
This carpet's five years old. It looks, it still looks brand new.
I would've guessed to put it in this last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, where they had the owls and...
Well, Mrs. Haddock always says some goofy creature, but...
Yeah.
But this doesn't, this room doesn't have a bad smell.
Anything barbous used to feed hamsters and rabbits and...
Oh, are these Kool-Aiders actually?
Yeah, these are carpet tiles. And see, and that's what I like about it is you can't, you can just play, replace the square through that vision, but you can't tell that it is that.
Not much.
Yeah, you have to study it a little bit.
That's great.
So if the Kool-Aid gets filled, you just have to replace that one?
Yeah.
See, part of the cleaning, we have responsibilities of what the cleaners need to do. And they sign off and check off when they get something done. And then we can come through and see where they're at with their cleaning schedule. Like one of the cleaners the other day, I went down and said, you know, you're behind schedule. You're gonna have the rest of the crew having to come in and help you. And I said, that's not fair to them, so you need to pick up your pace and get working a little harder. And then he did, he jumped right on it and he got, he's back on the schedule, so, you know, it's good to be able to go down and talk with them and keep them in line and, you know, we've got a good crew, we've got a senior crew of, of cleaners, but they're good, they're solid.
It's all labels and everything that they're used to give the clients.
Yeah, kids are much likelier to get a nice clean piece of clothing, but...
We have Deanna Schroeder who's special ed in this room down here, used to be John Parker's, but we've moved her back down into the lower elementary building and took Norm Beard, who was a title teacher, and brought him up into Amber Dobbs' room and they'll be sharing over here. And title, you, we used to share a room together, but we'll put them together again. And then we'll stick the fourth grade teacher in here, fifth grade teacher, fifth grade, fifth grade, so it'll be fourth, 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 and fifth, 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 keeping them kind of close to each other from that plan. So, any questions on the facility?
Have we made any headway with, um, the insurance claim for the scoreboard?
Yes, we have, we've ordered the scoreboard, it's on order. The one thing the insurance company is talking with me about is they don't wanna pay the full price on the installation of it, they think that it's a little high. And I've told them, you know, if you feel that way, you give bids on it. We ended up with three different bids and we went with the lowest bidder. And they're worried about the posts that are going in the ground. And I said, you know, from what all of, each of the contractors told me was the scoreboard has enough mass on it that it creates this wind sail effect and that they have to put so much, they have to countersink their posts so far into the ground and they have to put so much concrete on them. Because if you look at the posts that broke off, you can tell that there was some pretty significant force that was being applied to that scoreboard and a lot of torque that caused them to snap those posts on. Because the posts just, they didn't...
Jagged and just...
Yeah, it just snapped them right off. So, um, we went ahead and we ordered it and I told them if we can't negotiate a better rate, I expect them to pay the full price on our insurance claim. So, we'll see, we'll work on that.
That was crazy though. Man on the ground.
That was ordered this week and should be in by the start of football.
Are we gonna put it on wood again?
No.
Iron, steel?
We're gonna put them on I-beams. Uh, we had a couple of different bids. We had one that was twelve-inch tubing, uh, structural metal tubing. And then there was one that was I-beam and, you know, both were equally strong and... You know, but what amazes me is that scoreboard is no bigger than the old one. How many years has that old one stayed up there? And the wind never blew it over or snapped the posts?
Yeah, right against the wind.
Yeah, we, we had a microburst that night, it really did.
Well, I know that wind came out, was a south, was a southeasterly wind that came from this direction. And I think it just kinda got through those trees at the right angle and hit that scoreboard just right. Well, no other questions, we're done with our tour. You can adjourn for dinner?
That's adjourned for dinner.